Welcome to the Voices from Illinois 15th Congressional District Town Hall, brought to you tonight by the Charleston Women's Huddle Group. Our coed Huddle Group is an outgrowth of the Women’s March in Washington DC in January. Our mission is guided by the national actions suggested by the Women’s March Organization. As we live in a representative democracy, one of these actions is to interact with our elected officials. Several members of our group have requested a town hall meeting with Representative Shinkus. He has repeatedly refused, stating that he prefers to meet with only two to four people at a time. With that policy, only a small percentage of his 700,000 constituents have a chance of interacting with him face-to-face. Therefore, we decided to host a town hall and invite Representative Shinkus to come. His decision not to attend will not stop the town hall. We will make sure that Representative Shinkus gets a report of what we say tonight so that our voices are heard. Since Carl Sporer is running to represent us in the 15th District, we have also invited him to hear our voices. Charleston native Gail Mason has agreed to be the moderator for our town hall. She’s a recently retired professor from EIU and has moderated various League of Women Voting forums over the past two decades. Dr. Mason will now explain the rules and proceedings for tonight’s event.
First, I want to welcome everybody here. It’s great that so many people showed up. I know there is a lot going on at this time of the year. And I also appreciate Carl Sporer coming here tonight, even though his position is more listening than engaging in a candidate’s forum. But he will be, is, the Democratic candidate for the 15th District, 15th U.S. Congressional District. I wanted to mention the purpose of tonight, which is to give constituents within the District 15 a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and make comments about important state and national issues. Since our current congressional representative has chosen not to attend this town hall, the Huddle Group, as Ellen Woolcott mentioned, will send a summary of concerns to him so he at least knows what we talked about and what we find important at this point. I’m going to present a few rules for the town hall, and I will also read very brief bios of Mr. Shinkus and Mr. Sporer. Then I will ask the first person to speak. And if you have not yet signed up to speak, we have a few spots left. We already have around 19, 20 people who’ve decided they have something to say. But we’ll go from speaker to speaker. We stop at 7:30, no matter what’s going on. And just before that, I will stop in general so that Mr. Sporer can make any kind of comment he wants to make that takes two minutes to make. So he’ll have two minutes at the end. But I have mentioned that Mr. Sporer does have the right at any point to either stand up and say, “This is something I agree completely with,” or “I disagree,” or “I find this important,” whatever he wants to do with that. The very first rule is civil discourse. We want, we need to recognize that in any given audience, there will be different sensibilities and there will be different opinions. So civil discourse is the most important thing. You can ask a question, even though we don’t have anyone to respond directly, but you can ask a question, voice a concern, or make a comment. But first, you must check in with Paula if you haven’t done so yet, and get a number, which will reflect the speaking order. And that just allows us to move through this smoothly. And our speakers will stand over here, two people, three people in line, and that’s it. So if you can try to keep in mind what your number is, that would be great. And I’ll try to help you along with that, too. You have up to two minutes to speak. And that may sound like a short period of time for some of you, but there’s a lot you can say in a two-minute time period. Around 1 minute and 45 seconds, you will see this, and that means you have 15 seconds to wrap up. I’ll try not to cut you off directly, let you finish your thought, but you do need to wrap it up around 15 seconds later. If you think you need a microphone, we have two microphones. At this point, I’m sure there are some of you who never need a microphone, and some of you who certainly would be helped by that. Another rule, it’s fourth on my list, is please state your name so we know who you are. Please be clear, brief, speak loudly so we can all hear. And just remember that we want to try to get as many people as possible to participate. So we don’t want to have to stop at 10 because we had trouble with the flow. And the other thing is, this is a small comment, and I don’t think it’s going to be particularly important for you because you’re going to be over there, but just remember that the people here are your audience. I’m not the main audience, so you don’t have to talk to me. I’ll be listening to you. That’s okay. You don’t have to talk to me. If we have any concerns along the line, I’ll address those as they come up. So the two biographies are very brief, and we have handouts on the back table for you for both Congressman Shinkus and for Mr. Sporer. So feel free to take those. There’s more information that would be very helpful for you, I think.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Buckley, and I am from Charleston. As a woman who has worked to achieve equal rights for women my entire life, my entire adult life, I am appalled at the Republican agenda on women’s issues. They consistently vote against fair and equal pay for women. They vote against employment laws banning discrimination against women in the workplace. Republicans have proposed thousands of bills and passed many at the state and federal levels, aimed at controlling women’s health care and reproductive decisions, thereby taking away our right to privacy to make our own decisions. Congressman Shinkus votes for the Republican agenda on those issues. He recently made headlines at a congressional hearing in which he said that men should not have to pay health insurance for prenatal care for women because it does not affect them. I would think that fathers would have a state in wanting to see their wives or partners covered by health insurance because that’s going to result in healthier babies and healthier mothers. His voting record shows that he votes against women 82% of the time. I would ask Congressman Shinkus how he justifies his votes on women’s issues.
So my question for Representative Shinkus, who isn’t here, and perhaps Mr. Sporer would like to comment on it, concerns President Trump’s proposed budget and how our representatives might respond to it. In particular, the budget proposed cutting the Department of Agriculture by 21%. USDA service centers would be reduced, research would be cut, and in particular, rural development grants would be cut. This is a rural district, as we know, dependent on agriculture very much, and many parts of it are poor and in need of development. How do our representatives respond to a proposed 21% cut to the U.S. Department of Agriculture?
I’m Karen Clausen of Charleston, Illinois. I’m a pharmacist, and my question concerns health care. Mr. Shinkus, you voted to replace Obamacare with Trump Care. How can you in good conscience support this plan, which Congress’s own Budget Office says will increase the number of insured by $14 million in one year and $24 million by 2026? Private insurance has made health care available only to those who can afford it and cuts out the people who need it most. We are the only industrialized nation without basic guaranteed health care. Instead of going backwards, either fix what’s wrong with Obamacare or pass Medicare for all.
Hi, my name is Nikki Davidson, and I’m from Charleston. And this is for Representative Shinkus. We all know that the last attempt at repealing and replacing Obamacare failed because too few Republicans would support it because they felt that it didn’t go far enough in the cuts to Medicaid and other services. The next proposal is sure to cut Medicaid much more deeply. I work for CCAR Industries as a QIDP case manager, and I provide services to people with developmental disabilities that allow them to live as normal a life as possible. Today, people with disabilities have their own apartments, their own car, and they have productive and rewarding jobs. We have seen the advances that early intervention can do. People who were once thought to not be able to talk or help care for themselves can now do that, and they’re selling at that. This wasn’t the case before these services came along. It wasn’t too long ago that people were herded like animals into institutional settings, where they were given very little opportunities for enrichment, let alone humanity. They were medicated into zombiehood, told that they couldn’t possibly do what the rest of us do. And they were kept hidden away, worst of all. I strongly urge you to get real and oppose Trump Care because it’s sure to include block grants and per capita caps for Medicaid. Since block grants do not reflect the true medical inflation, they fail to fully fund services. Per capita caps fail to take into account increases in costs due to new treatments and interventions. The implementation of either will certainly mean a decrease in services and/or a decrease in the number of people who can be served. To be dramatic but honest, people will die if we have more cuts to Medicaid.
My name is Kathy Hummel, and for 32 years, I taught in elementary school and lived to tell about it. And I’ve continued to volunteer in the classrooms. Representative Shinkus, if out of your busy schedule, you can find about 12 minutes to watch an entertaining video on YouTube about blueberries. If you put in “blueberries,” “education,” and “speech,” that’ll get you to it. And this is an education video about Jamie Volmer. And he was the former CEO of a pricey ice cream company. He was speaking to a teacher in service gathering about how schools could be fixed by running them like a business. A teacher in the audience praised him for the high-quality ingredients of his ice cream and then asked the question, “If you received a shipment of blueberries not up to your standards, what would you do?” He replied that he would, of course, reject them. And at that moment, he knew he’d been zigged. She, of course, followed through the analogy that the public schools cannot reject any blueberries. We work with what comes through our doors, no matter how flawed. The Republican-proposed HR 610 bill would overturn the 1965 ESEA, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, that has governed public education for 50 years, guaranteeing free and equitable education across the country for all the blueberries. All the programs work with vulnerable children, such as kids with disabilities, immigrants’ kids who need English as a second language services, homeless kids, kids in poverty, and that will all be gone. The healthy nutritional meals will be gone. Funding for public schools will be diminished. Money would be given in block grants to states that would then give parents vouchers to send children to schools of their choice. This is the movement to privatize education. Many teachers in private schools have lower educational qualifications and fewer years of experience than teachers in public schools. It seems to me that with the Republican-reputed HR 610 bill, our educational system will be subject to chaos with the loss of revenue. Will the vulnerable children, our blueberries, be severely harmed?
Hello, my name is Bogdan Trankow. I teach mathematics at Eastern in Charleston. President Trump’s budget proposal would cut 14% from the Department of Education. $37 billion would be eliminated from teacher training, after-school, and summer programs, and aid to first-generation and low-income students. Work-study aid for college students would be reduced, considering that a major public university is near your district, one that historically served many first-generation and low-income students who rely on work-study programs and other forms of financial aid. How do you, sir, respond to this aspect of the proposal? I’m asking Mr. Sporer because I don’t think that fixture can answer any questions.
My name is Jennifer White, and I live in Mattoon. And I have a question about Planned Parenthood. Planned Parenthood is a high-quality reproductive health care provider. 97% of the services that it provides includes cancer screens, contraceptive care, STD testing and treatment, and well-woman visits. No federal dollars are used to pay for abortions. Mr. Shinkus’s voting record has consistently voted for legislation that would prevent women from using Medicaid to cover their care at Planned Parenthood centers. He has also voted to allow states to withdraw crucial Title X family planning funding from Planned Parenthood. Without Planned Parenthood, women of low income, women of color, women in rural areas in your district will suffer disproportionately. I care about these women, and I know that they have the right to control their reproductive health. How will you ensure that these women will have access to these crucial services that allow them to lead healthier and more independent lives?
My name is Keith Woolcott. I’m from Charleston, and I’d like to talk just briefly about internet privacy because it happened just this last month. Representative Shinkus voted to repeal internet privacy rules that were passed last year by the Federal Communication Commission. These regulations would have required internet providers to get permission from us in order to use and sell our personal data, including browsing history, geolocation, financial information, and medical information. Sometimes that’s encrypted, but sometimes it’s not. A recent poll shows that 94% of us want to keep our internet privacy. Who wouldn’t? So why did Shinkus vote to give it up? Well, the last election cycle, he was given over $100,000 from telecommunications companies, and those are the companies that are going to use and sell our data. So it sure looks like he sold our vote rather than representing us. So, Mr. Sporer, I ask you, do you think internet providers should be required to get our permission to use our personal data?
My name is Erin Walters, and I’ve lived in this area for 35 years, Charleston resident. I’m also the executive director of SEKUS, the Sexual Assault Counseling and Information Service. We serve nine counties. We work with children, adults, families, significant others who have been impacted by sexual violence. We do prevention education programs throughout these nine counties. And every year, we receive federal funding from VOCA and VAWA, two of our significant funders, funding services, whether they be prevention education or direct services like counseling, advocacy, legal, and medical. And we’ve seen a reduction in our funding year after year, specifically with our prevention efforts. We go into classrooms starting at the age of three, all the way up through high school and into the college classroom as well. We know that sexual harassment is a major issue. We know that bullying and sexually harassing someone based on their sexual orientation is also another issue. We know that sexual victimization starts early and happens often. And we currently have waiting lists, and we rely very heavily on both state and federal, but primarily federal, funding to keep these programs going. I would ask Representative Shinkus what his commitment would be to maintaining the funding that we currently have, and what his commitment would be to reducing the level of decreases in funding that seem to have occurred over year after year. But I would ask you, what is your commitment to funding for victims of sexual crimes, domestic violence, and things of that nature?
My name is Donna Turner Hudson. I’m president of PFLAG Charleston. We are a local chapter of a national organization that supports equality for LGBTQ folks. So although our laws in Illinois have been largely helpful in protecting the rights of LGBTQ citizens, your voting record notwithstanding, sir, our LGBTQ youth continue to be at risk due to school bullying and oppression in society in general. In particular, we know that there are some school districts, even in our own area, that are developing restroom and locker room policies that stigmatize and isolate transgender students. What will you do? Well, nothing, we know. But how about you, Mr. Sporer? What will you do to work toward equality for LGBTQ persons, and in particular, to support the rights of our transgender youth and ensure their safety and chance for success in our schools?
Hi, my name is Peter Andrews. I live here in Charleston. Well, so many things to say in a little time. Not the least of which is the fact that if we had simply kept 59 Tomahawk missiles in our pants, we could have supported Amtrak and Big Bird in the 80s. I really want to talk about something that’s a little less sexy, and that’s the nature of our democracy. In recent elections, the 92% of the incumbents running for the Russian Duma were reelected. In our last federal election, 97% of the incumbents who ran were reelected. This is not what we think of as democracy. One of the big reasons is something that’s very hard to handle, and that’s the way districts are drawn. I’m not going to say anything about that, but I would urge you, as has been said earlier, try Googling “John Oliver and gerrymandering,” and you’ll get an absolutely sensational discussion of the problems here. I would just like to say, I hope that you would be able to stipulate that the president’s claims of massive voter fraud are absolutely unfounded. The least of our worries is people voting when they shouldn’t vote. Rather, I would like to, I would ask you if you would move decisively to curtail voter ID regulations and voter changes, or make things that make it harder for people to vote. Right now, we have no record, literally, of people trying to vote when they shouldn’t, so why shouldn’t we make as many people vote, or let as many people vote as they can? And I wonder if you’re at all concerned about the fact that although Attorney General Sessions formally withdrew Justice Department objections to the Texas voter ID law, the Texas court almost unanimously ruled that they were, in fact, discriminatory. So I would urge you to do all you can to make the voting system in this country fair, accessible to everyone, and verifiable.
Hi, I’m Mac White. I work at WEIUTV here in Charleston. If Trump’s proposed budget is passed, CPB funding is zeroed out, it is projected that close to 100 rural PBS stations will cease to exist. These stations are a lifeline to rural America. How can you justify this when it is your constituents that will be most adversely affected?
My name is Jim Loughlin. I’m from Charleston, Illinois. Been here just a couple of years. I did call Representative Shinkus this morning. His number in Washington DC is 202-225-5271, and invited him to come tonight. He wasn’t available tonight. I call a number of congressmen every day, and here’s what I have for Mr. Shinkus tonight. Mr. Donald Trump is in violation of U.S. Code. Listen to this. Title V, Part III, Subpart B, Chapter 31, Subchapter 1, Number 3110, which prohibits employment of relatives in the agency in which they are serving. Agency for the purpose of this law is an executive, a person in the legislative branch, or the judiciary branch. A public official means an officer, including the president and a member of Congress. A relative, there are 28 categories of relatives. It does say daughter and son-in-law here. And a public official, here’s the law. A public official may not appoint, employ, promote, advance, or advocate for appointment, employment, promotion, or advancement in or to a civilian position in the agency in which he is serving or over which he may exercise jurisdiction or control. He may not appoint any individual who is a relative of that public official. Does that make sense to you? This would touch a little on the fact that perhaps one of these relatives is doing business out of the White House also, a public business. I would also ask Mr. Shinkus, and I do call him quite often, and a number of congressmen, I have their numbers if you need numbers. We need to keep the logs of people in the White House, Mar-a-Lago. They should be put out publicly, and we also need our friend, Mr. Trump, to publicly. We need the House of Representatives and the Senate Intelligence Committees to subpoena his taxes. Real simple.
My name is Ellen Woolcott. I live in Charleston, Illinois. The stream protection rule was enacted to target mountaintop removal coal mines where debris containing toxic metals could reach nearby streams, thereby threatening water quality. Representative Shinkus, you co-sponsored Joint Resolution Number 38, which has overturned the stream protection rule because you believe that you are protecting coal mining jobs in Illinois. Since 2008, 300 coal plants have closed as electric companies are switching to natural gas and renewables. Doesn’t it make more sense to create new jobs to replace the coal mining jobs that are on their way out? Where is the logic in allowing an industry to save money and temporarily save jobs if it harms the health of people through water pollution and air pollution once that coal is burned? Is profit worth more than our health and the health of our planet?
Paula Enstrom, and I’m a nurse. I work with older patients, mostly, but young people, too, in cardiac rehab and with diabetes education, and they rely very heavily on Medicare and Social Security to be able to take care of themselves. Paul Ryan’s budget proposal focuses on cuts to Medicare and Social Security. They’re not the only people in our district that rely on it. Are you in favor of these cuts? And since Shinkus is not here...
We have a president whose grasp of history seems to be tenuous at best, who seems to believe that Frederick Douglass is alive and well, who uses the phrase “America first,” apparently unaware that it was used by people who wanted the United States to let Nazi Germany do what it pleased. He uses the phrase “enemy of the people,” used by Lenin and Stalin and sometimes Mao. And less well-known than those examples, when John Shinkus was campaigning with Bruce Rauner in 2014, he described Bruce Rauner as someone who has shown that he can make the trains run on time. It’s a very bad comparison, partly because it compares a candidate for an American governorship to a fascist dictator of the 20th century. It’s also bad because Mussolini did not make the trains run on time. That wasn’t his responsibility. And that comment is a grim joke. Yes, but at least he made the trains run on time. So if Representative Shinkus were here, I’d like to ask him if he thinks that the trains are running on time in our state. But, you know, with Amtrak cuts in the offing, there may be no trains running on or off schedule. What I’d like to ask Mr. Sporer is just for any example from 20th-century history that he thinks would be helpful or important for American voters to be thinking about right now.
All right. Well, my question is this. There has been much concern expressed about the fate of Syrian civilians who were recently the victims of chemical attack. This led to a counterattack by the United States government, our military specifically, which it’s very likely you supported, Mr. Shinkus. If you are genuinely concerned about Syrian citizens, why have you opposed their entry into this country as refugees?
My name is Jessica Mertz. And I’m from here in Charleston since 2004. And, Mr. Sporer? How do you feel about Syrian refugees?
My name's Lisa Segura and I'm from Sullivan. My question is about another vulnerable population that hasn't been mentioned this evening, and that is the immigrants who are living peacefully and working very productively for us as Americans. Donald Trump has targeted them from the beginning of his campaign and continues to do so with his executive orders. While he is cutting funding to all the programs that have been mentioned this evening, he's asking for $3 billion to fund a dangerous deportation force, a mass deportation force. And my question is for Representative Shumpkas, if he will oppose that funding? And for you, sir, how you view that issue?
I didn't want to ask this question because it's so hard to stick to one thing. My name is Cynthia Adams. I live in Charleston. I've been here about a year and a half. I moved from the Chicago area. But I wrote out this question. Mr. Shumpkas has been in office a long time. My question is really for the public, more than for Mr. Shumpkas. What should we expect of our representative in Congress? Is he just supposed to be there every year, do whatever he wants, and not listen to us? No one expects a person to agree with us on everything, with all of us certainly. But can we not expect respect? Enough respect to show up? Enough respect to watch our video and listen to us? Let's be frank here, we are all citizens before we are Democrats or Republicans. I wasn't born a Democrat. I voted for Reagan. I mean, I've gone both ways lots of times. And I really want fiscal responsibility, especially Donald Trump is going to Mar-a-Lago every weekend. And Melania should not get security unless she lives in the White House. She needs to live where she wants to live. But I am wondering, really, about Representative Shumpkas, what have you done for us lately? Still applies. Are we better off today than when he was elected 22 years ago? If we are, and it's because of his actions, I will vote for him. But what I am seeing is we are not better off. Rural land is being bought up by big corporations who are running the farms. Family farmers are gone, a lot, anyway. Our air is so polluted. Our area, this area, has higher rates of pollution than the Chicago area. We have higher rates of COPD, asthma, allergies. Our university is losing 25% of the students. Our towns are losing population. Small businesses are closing. Just drive around. All these rural areas, a lot of businesses have closed. So what has Shumpkas done to address these issues? Is he developing a tech corridor? Are we going to have Branson, Missouri here in Charleston? Are we developing any other sources of revenue? Because I haven't seen it. Is he getting federal money to sponsor enterprise zones? Is he trying to get a federal infrastructure bill to get us a high-speed train to connect Chicago and St. Louis and come through here? I'm not hearing anything, any ideas of how he's planning to deal with the expected one-third loss of jobs in the next 10 years because of technology. You can keep trying to blame the immigrants, but when the immigrants have stopped coming, who are you going to blame then?
Hi, Charles Delman from Charleston. I didn't really want to come up and ask another question, but since this issue didn't get brought up, I really wanted to bring it up. As many of you know, our world is facing what amounts to an ecological crisis. We're seeing leeching of coral reefs, rising sea levels. Temperatures in the Arctic this winter rose to levels 25 degrees or more above normal. We're in the midst of the sixth great extinction, where we're losing hundreds, if not thousands of species every day or perhaps every minute. Global warming threatens our agriculture and our ecosystems generally. It threatens to acidify the oceans. I don't really have to ask Representative Shumpkas what he thinks of climate change because he's frequently said that God told Noah he wouldn't flood the earth again, so climate change isn't going to happen. Personally, I don't find that argument very convincing. And in President Trump's proposed budget, the agency that receives by far the greatest percentage cut is the Environmental Protection Agency, which would be cut by almost one-third. Research would be eliminated. All programs addressing climate change would be eliminated. Energy efficiency programs would be eliminated. Now, Representative Shumpkas, I was under the impression that Republicans were against waste, but apparently you're in favor of wasting energy. I personally am against waste also, and I think it would be a good idea not to waste energy. So since you're not here to answer and since I have a pretty good idea of what your opinion might be, I'd like to ask Mr. Sporer.
So I just hadn't heard anyone mention this yet. I'm Zachary Shorman, born and raised around Charleston. But I don't necessarily consider this near as important as the other issues we discussed tonight, but the war on drugs and the potential legalization of marijuana. I was wondering what some of the viewpoints for that might be because it seems to me that the war on drugs has had the exact opposite effect, where instead of helping the communities, getting them clean, we see a lot more of people repressing that, and then it becomes a hidden issue that we don't talk about, we sweep under the rug. So I suppose, I was just curious to hear what Shumpkas would have to say if he were here on the issue.